Good morning. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I am the Chair of this committee. I am joined today by Councilmembers Reich, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy, and Goodman. And we will go ahead and start. And whoop, we do have a quorum with Councilmember Fry. Thank you. So we have four items on our agenda. At the end of the agenda, we will switch to our Information Technology Subcommittee. But first, we have two consent items. The first item is approving appointments to the Transgender Equity Council. The appointments to be approved are council appointments, three appointments that are city employee seats for Jared Erdman, Kate Nelson, and Destiny Shong. Then we are also confirming a mayoral appointment of Kristin Johnson. So then item number two, excuse me, is we had had a required update regarding preparation of a request for proposals for an ongoing minimum wage study. And this work is still ongoing, and there is a full written update attached for council members and for the public. And so I will move both of those consent items. Is there any discussion on either item? Seeing none, on approval, please say aye. Aye, opposed, and those items are approved. Our discussion item for today is a presentation by the Human Resources Department on Strategic Workforce Planning.
Good morning, Committee Chair Glidden and Committee Members. My name is Mary Lynn Talarico, and Deb Kruger is with me today. And we're going to do a little bit of a tag team, if you will, to present this update on our workforce demographics.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge the staff directives from 2015 and 2016 that support the diversification of our workforce. With your help, we've undertaken an ambitious goal of 41% people of color and 45% women in our workplace by 2022. These are aggressive and aspirational goals set to provide a goalpost, if you will, for the City of Minneapolis government workforce to more closely match the demographics of the city residents. In addition to the city workforce goals, through the Equity Opportunity Report, we have established city and individual department goals based on the number of individuals who have the required skill set in the labor pool from which we hire. We are here today to provide you with an update on the progress made towards the goals that have been set and to provide you with the strategies that are in place to make further You can see that our agenda is various types of updates, and I'd like to say that our discussion today will outline the multifaceted approach to address the challenges we face on many fronts. To reiterate from our 2016 presentation, we believe that to be successful, it takes strong accountable leadership, flexible and nimble recruitment and selection processes, a culture that engages employees so that they want to stay at the City of Minneapolis, a performance management system that holds each of us accountable to contribute to a welcoming work environment, development of and discipline to use data, analysis, and metrics to enable decision-making, and policy and practices that are aligned to the city values of equity and One Minneapolis.
So the chart that's up on the screen depicts, we're going to do just a quick diversity goal progress, where we are in terms of the demographics of our workforce as of June 30th, 2017. So this chart depicts the percent and number of employees of color in the city's workforce on a trend line from 2009 through June 30th of 2017. Since the 41% goal was adopted in August of 2016, the presence of employees of color in the workforce has increased by 1.5%. The annual goal, however, for past year was a 2% increase. So we did miss the mark by half a percent. And while overall hiring of people of color was up, we are continuing to develop entry pathway programs for positions that have not been attracting non-traditional candidates. And we're also continuing to build strong relationships within the community, very specific community groups, to better understand and remove barriers to employment at the City of Minneapolis, so we can continue to improve on the hiring percentages. And turnover, of course, also plays a part in the diversity of our workforce. And while turnover of employees of color has decreased by half a percent, the goal for the past year was a full 1% decrease. And to help with the turnover that we're continuing to experience, we're holding discussions with the recently formed Black Employees Network Group, Resource Group, and exit interview data will help us to continue to identify additional strategies to increase the retention rates of our employees of color.
So Ms. Kruger, could you please just repeat some of those percentages because I don't see them in the presentation? The retention change, can you repeat that?
Right. So retention did go down, turnover went down a half a percent. We were expecting a 1% or anticipating a 1% in order to reach our goals. We set annual goals of a 1% decrease in turnover, and we did hit a half a percent decrease. But we're continuing to look at strategies and discussions internally with our employees to find out where there are some additional strategies to increase the retention rate of our employees of color.
Okay.
And then for females, this chart depicts the percentage and number of females in the city's workforce, again, from 2009 through June 30th of this year. Since the 45% goal for females in our workforce was adopted in August of 2016, the presence of women in our workforce has increased by 1% from 29 to 30%. The annual goal for females, though, for last year was a, we were anticipating a 1.5% increase, so we did miss that by a half a percent. Overall hiring of women went up by 9% in the last year, which is significant, but we can do better. So we're continuing to, again, develop some entry pathways programs and very targeted recruiting initiatives for positions that, again, have not been attracting females, particularly in our public safety and service maintenance areas. And while turnover of females has decreased by one and a half percent, which is very encouraging, the goal was to decrease it by two and a half percent. So discussions, again, with our recently formed 29% Club Employee Resource Group and exit interview data will help us to continue to identify additional strategies to help increase the retention rate of females in our workforce. 91% of respondents to a recent national public sector survey on workforce trends stated that their agency's most challenging issue is attracting and retaining top talent with the needed skills for public service. Improving workforce diversity is a long-term and complex issue. As this survey and other studies show, most public sector entities are facing a similar challenge in improving workforce diversity, both locally, regionally, and nationally. Our strategy here at the city is twofold, to increasing the diversity of our workforce. One is increasing the number of people of color and women hired in our workforce, well, in our workforce through hiring and promotion. The second is retention and retaining top talent in our workforce by growing an inclusive culture where all employees feel welcome. The very tight, we have a very tight and competitive labor market, and the types of jobs needed in the public sector are requiring government agencies nationwide to rethink and allocate more resources to their hiring and retention strategies, and the city is no exception to that. For instance, in 2016, Governor Dayton set a goal to double the number of state jobs held by minorities by the end of 2019 and allocated 2.6 million towards that effort. Hennepin County and the City of St. Paul have also set workforce diversity goals. They are lower than the city's goals. Ours were very aspirational. They have set theirs lower. For instance, I know in Hennepin County, they set a 2% increase in people of color in county jobs in a two-year span, where we had a 2% increase in a one-year span. But we're all setting goals and measuring progress against those goals. There are many factors within our city government that make our culture a little different and a little more unique, even from other public sector entities. And we have a merit-based hiring and promotion system. We operate within a civil service environment, which many others do not. 92% of our employees are represented by one of 24 bargaining units. And many of the city's largest job categories are traditionally dominated by men and white employees. And those jobs include skilled trades and public safety careers that are essential to protecting public safety and maintaining cities' infrastructure. And part of the strategy around increasing the diversity of our workforce was setting workforce diversity goals that we hadn't had before. So in order to measure the effectiveness of our recruiting, hiring, promotion, and retention strategies, both short-term and long-term diversity goals were set in the past year. The first goal is an enterprise goal of having 41% people of color and 45% females by the year 2022. It is an aspirational goal, and it represents a target for a workforce that better reflects the community that we serve. And then we also have department placement goals. So through the Equal Employment Opportunity Report, individual department goals were set based on available talent with the required skill set in the pool that we draw from. These goals set a benchmark for measurement on progress and directs focused efforts towards areas that have the furthest stretch to meet their goals. So when we talk about measurement on progress against our goals, we do see that change, we do see change in progress when we have focused and intentional recruiting and hiring strategies, as this particular graph illustrates. The top graph, sorry, the graph as a whole shows the forecasted probability of meeting our 41% people of color in the workforce diversity goal by 2022. The top graph shows that if hiring, promotion, and separation trends continue as they have for the past seven years, it's forecasted that we would only be at 28% people of color in the workforce by the year 2022. However, taking a smaller slice of the trend and looking at a forecast based on the last three years only, where we have had focused and intentional targeted recruiting and expansion of entry pathways programs, the percentage of people of color in the workforce forecasted would go up to 31%, as shown in the bottom graph. That's just showing that where we have intentional focused efforts does make an impact. And we are, but as you know, 31% is still short of the 41% people of color target for the year 2022. And it's going to require dedicated resources, partnerships with other agencies and organizations, continued development of pathways programs, targeted recruitment outreach, and continued evaluation of our minimum qualifications for city positions. Those are going to be imperative elements that we continue and expand upon to increase the diversity of the city's workforce.
So one of the key elements in any culture change is leadership, and leadership plays a pivotal role here. In addition to collaborating with the departments to set goals, we have also enjoyed the accountability standards towards progress for leadership. So reporting with the mayor annually progress against goals, there is consideration now in the budgeting process of the human capital, human capital goals, when considering the needs for staffing, et cetera. We have implemented a data auditing process to identify the best practice to periodically engage third-party review of our workforce data to ensure accuracy of job codes to federal standards and to add occupational job codes, and this effort is currently underway. HR, in collaboration with IT and the Coordinators Office, has also undertaken a significant effort to provide up-to-date workforce data to department leaders to enable their decision-making and also to provide data to the public, and we'll talk more about that later. Still on the topic of importance of leadership is that it is very important to have diversity at the top of the organization when attracting and retaining diverse employees. What this particular graphs show is that over the period of 2013 through today, we have maintained sort of a steady number of four department heads who are people of color, and in the appointed leadership ranks 15 to 18 people of color. The reason that this is important is that it does signal to the workforce that we really are doing what we say that we're doing. It lets them know that there is possibility for their own advancement and potential, and that diverse senior leadership teams are more likely to be sensitive to issues requiring attention for retention of diverse employees. And at the end of the day, a study from Cornell indicates, having worked with 260 U.S. organizations, that organizations that adopt diversity initiatives outperform those who do not have such initiatives. The other aspect of our diversity is females. We've increased the number of women at both the department head level to over 40% and the appointed leaders level nearing 50% female.
Labor shortages and lack of diverse candidates for many city positions is a challenge that we are facing more and more often. The answer to this challenge for us here at the city, as well as many other public sector agencies, is to grow our own talent pool. As an example, and I'm sure all of you, all of you know about the Community Service Officer Program in the Police Department. It's a well-established, very successful pathway program to becoming a police officer. The CSO model is being replicated throughout the enterprise for other hard-to-fill positions such as auto and heavy equipment mechanics. 60% of the current auto mechanics at the city are eligible to retire in the next six years, 60%. It's a hard-to-fill position, anyway. Has been hard to fill for about the last five years, as heavy equipment operators in the Minnesota area particularly have gone up to North Dakota for a lot of the pipeline work. It's been very difficult to fill. And also, it's a trades position that fewer individuals are choosing as a career. The city is partnering with Roosevelt High School and St. Paul College to establish an apprentice program that will launch this year. We're also getting ready to launch the first cohort of a 911 dispatcher pathways program in partnership with Ramsey County, Hennepin County, City of St. Paul, and City of Bloomington, along with our educational partners, MCTC, and a nonprofit organization, and it's going to train participants in emergency communications. Graduates will be qualified to be hired as 911 dispatchers at any of these participating employer partners. It's going to reduce the training time that it takes to get our 911 dispatchers up to speed, to be on the phones. And it will reduce turnover as graduates get a realistic job preview. There'll be job shadowing during their, during their training and education portion of the program. They'll get a realistic job preview, what it, what it takes to be a 911 operator. A lot of times, we'll see a lot of our turnover happen within the first three months of a 911 dispatcher being, being on the phone, not quite, not quite sure what the job entailed until they're on the phones. The first cohort begins in September. We also have some pathways programs that are under construction for both in the assessors' area and our operating maintenance engineers who do the building, heating, HVAC, building equipment. So those two are under construction. We're working to hopefully get those finalized and in, in play by the end of this year. We have undergone a number of changes in our hiring processes that support equity, continuing to evaluate minimum qualifications for city positions. So it's a critical step in ensuring that barriers to employment are being removed. In the past year, for instance, 22% of the positions that were open had changes to the qualifications, pretty significant changes to qualifications, everything from eliminating requirement to employment, whether that be the elimination of a certification, having supervisory experience at the time of hire, or the need for a bachelor's degree. We've also eliminated testing processes that weren't adding value to the selection process, or were having an adverse impact against certain protected class candidates. And also moving the requirement of certification at the time of hire to within a certain period of time after hire, where the departments are also supporting their new hires and obtaining that certification. Additionally, we have been including second language proficiency and giving that a weight as a desirable qualification, particularly with direct customer-facing positions. This preference in the selection process has been successful in attracting diverse candidates to customer-facing positions. We have also drafted language pay procedures, which will compensate individuals who use a second language on the job, which is also helpful in attracting diverse candidates to the city. There's been an ordinance change to allow a broader pool of candidates to be considered for hire. That was basically the elimination of the Rule of Three last November. We, anecdotally, the hiring managers who have typically operated under the Rule of Three have stated that they're, it's been, it's been very successful. We've had, we've only had about four or five processes go through a full hiring cycle. So we don't have a lot of data to look at the effectiveness of the elimination of that policy, but I anticipate that it will have an increase in the diversity in those particular areas where Rule of Three had been in play before. And then collaborating with Labor, we've got a very, very strong partnership with our Labor reps on identifying and implementing more flexible hiring processes. For, as a couple of examples, in the IT area, varying business needs don't allow us to have a one-size-fits-all hiring process, and haven't for a while. For instance, in the IT area, one of the major concerns that they have is speed of the hiring process. They lose candidates in the time it takes, you know, to have it open for applications, screen applications, do interviewing. By the time they get around to making a job offer, about half of their candidates have already accepted job offers elsewhere. So we have worked with Labor to speed up that process whereby IT can begin interviewing qualified candidates before an eligible list has even been established. And that has been very successful in the IT area in not losing their top candidates. Some other changes that are coming up with the hiring processes to make them more flexible in a number of our departments, they have the flexibility to be able to hire by job family rather than a particular job title. And that, that gives them the ability to, to interview and select the right candidate for the right position at the right time, rather than say, for instance, in the Police Department with the forensic scientists, they have forensic scientists one, two, and three, and they may have a vacant position for a two level and interview candidates and decide that someone there has a perfect skill set to be at the three level. And now it will give them the ability to be able to change their position up very quickly so that they can take advantage of the opportunity to hire a candidate at a three level. And then, of course, having a welcoming workplace for all, some of the strategies and tactics around that has been to raise awareness of how unconscious bias impacts the hiring process and hiring decisions. We have had 142 hiring managers trained in cultural, being culturally intelligence and identifying their own conscious biases so that they're aware of that as they go through the hiring process, as well as selection best practices training. We will have mandatory interview panel training coming, coming in October, where every panel member who is sitting on an interview panel will also be trained in unconscious bias and best selection practices. We are launching an employment branding campaign that will tell the city's story as an employer. It's going to be an enterprise employment brand for the City of Minneapolis, identifying a value proposition for working for the city. Why do people want to come here and work for the city? Some of our desired outcomes from the employment branding will be an increased awareness of the city as a potential employer among recruitment prospects, a streamlined and focused recruiting communications that clearly defines the purpose and differentiators for working for the city, growth in diverse candidate pools, and consistent recruitment communications among current employees. We will be starting some focus group with segments of the workforce beginning in July and hope to have a rollout of the employment brand by the end of the year. We have had some very intentional strategies around just simply recreating visibility for the city as an employer of choice. As we go to, we probably attended three dozen job fairs over the last year, year and a half, and it's been, it was a very intentional strategy at the beginning just to get ourselves out in the presence of the community and prospective job candidates. You'll hear more often than not at a job fair, individuals say, "I had no idea that the city had those types of jobs available. It wouldn't have been an employer that I would have thought to look for." And so now we're changing the strategy a little bit as we've had visibility over the last two years at close to 70 job fairs, doing a more targeted, intentional approach to the job fairs that have either, have reached certain populations of candidates that we're looking to attract, and that also where we've seen very significant numbers of professional candidates coming through, and where we have had the biggest impact, where we've had referral sources state that they've come through certain job fairs, or where we've made some very significant community connections.
Specifically in relation to retaining top talent, effective onboarding leads to early productivity, excitement, and increased engagement of new hires. It makes new employees comfortable in their work environment and cognizant of the collegial relationships and how they matter to the organization's overall objectives. In the last year, we have introduced a new onboarding program for appointed leaders as well as for managers. Employees, of course, are our best ambassadors, and we have also launched two new Employee Resource Groups, Debs referred to them, the 29% Club for Women and the Black Employees Network. A third Employee Resource Group will be launched in, on Veterans Day, and that's the Military ERG. The purpose of the ERGs really is to engage employees and hear their voices in what is going well, things that they'd like to have influence or impact over. We'll be implementing exit interviews, and we're working with IT and Finance to implement recommendations from the Leave Work Group by October 2017. When that work is completed, the redesigned exit interview process will be launched. From the exit interviews, we hope to engage more people in actually talking with us as they leave the organization and hearing about why they may be leaving, and this may give us some ideas as to how to better engage employees. And then at the individual level, we will be providing tools and strategies to engage employees in their own development. We have been using a variety of things as change mechanisms to change the culture, and training is certainly one of them. It provides tools and practices and languages, a language that we particularly want employees to have so that we're all saying the same thing, thinking similarly as far as a welcoming work environment. We've provided a number of training at the supervisory and leadership level, and they have components of cultural intelligence within these various trainings. We also offer intercultural assessment and coaching. Many departments have taken advantage of, of that offering. And coming in the future this year is cultural intelligence embedded in customer service. It's currently It's currently under construction, and so it will be focused on those employees who are customer-facing, have direct contact with the public, and to give them, again, tools, strategies to interact with people in a culturally intelligent and agile way. We've been partnering with labor reps on the long-term strategies for flexible job classification framework that meets various business needs, and Deb had been talking about some of those kinds of changes that are underway. At the end of the day, we have a variety of of new things that we have been offering, a number of new tools, new processes, new classes have been built. Our challenge is in sustaining those efforts while continuing to build new opportunities. Over the past couple of years, we focused on leadership and management, so you've probably heard us talking about leadership U, about supervisor U. This year, we are focusing on developing coursework for employee U. All of this work to maintain what we've already built and to develop new programs takes resources. On another level, we're collaborating with Hiring and Promotion LMC to consider new ways to speed up the hiring and promotion process. When you think about the kinds of structures that we operate within, while there's great value to operating under service rules, our processes are slow and complicated. We face new challenges and need to become more nimble and flexible. One example is that currently the way to advance your career is through supervision. We're asking ourselves the question, are there other avenues to advance technical experts without adding people management? Another example for for some employees, attaining a specific certification would enable them to advance. The current structure requires us requires undergoing a formal promotion process. Working with labor, we've created an automated promotional process that is working in some areas, and so we're asking ourselves, can this process be used for other areas? We have a complex organizational structure and varying business lines. Departments maintain autonomy. Our culture is quite hierarchical. Some of the internal challenges that we face as we try to roll out new new processes and tools, making them certainly fit the needs of the departments. Externally, we are challenged by the availability of people with specific skill sets that we need. So for example, people aren't choosing careers in the trades these days. This has significant impact on our ability to hire electricians, plumbers, and welders. Competition for talent is intense. We compete with other government entities and also with private industry, and as we all know, there's approximately 19 Fortune 500 or 100 companies headquartered here in the Twin Cities, so that certainly intensifies the the competition for talent. The Greater MSP study that has recently come out shows that professionals professional people of color are leaving the region due to lack of inclusivity in the workplace and the cultural amenities that they would enjoy to have in the community. We need to continue to find new and engaging tools to offer our workforce. We need to continue to network and partner with other public sector agencies in the region to address barriers to growing a diverse workforce. We need to continue to have strong, accountable leadership, flexible and nimble recruitment and selection processes, a culture that engages employees so they want to stay at the city of Minneapolis, a performance management system that holds each of us accountable to contribute to a welcoming work environment, development of and discipline to use, data analysis and metrics to enable decision-making, and policy and practices that are aligned to the city values of equity and One Minneapolis. Our benchmarking experiences and research show that we are doing well in building greater diversity into our workforce. We will continue to do things differently and continually challenge ourselves to identify and address the barriers to achieve a city government workforce that reflects the city's residents. We would be happy to stand for questions.
Great. Well, thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation. We do have a lineup of council members with some questions, and I had actually put myself in queue. I won't go through a whole list. Maybe I'll just kind of start with the first thing on my mind and then let my colleagues continue to weigh in. We'll see how far we get. One, let me just talk about one thing I wish I saw a little bit more in your presentation is what are the accountability mechanisms that are in place and or that we are working to set up better? So as an example, you talked about the EEO placement goals and working with departments on strategies to receive those goals. I guess my expectation would be that there is as much attention placed on how departments build out their whole workforce assessment plan, including their goals around equal employment opportunity, both for hiring and in recruitment and for retention, as that has been identified as a significant issue for the city as a whole and and of course, other employers as well. So, you know, so so what are today the requirements for departments to put together those kinds of plans? How are they supported in putting together those plans? And if there is a mechanism yet today for doing that, how are those plans then evaluated on a regular basis? Again, I feel like there needs to be some sort of regularity to working and then supporting the departments who have a lot of ideas, but also need the structure of HR professionals to help them realize those ideas and move forward their goals.
Madam Chairperson, the overall strategy frankly is on a voluntary basis. However, I will say that we have support from the HR generals who work closely with the department heads. The mayor's request to have updates on progress against goals is another accountability mechanism. The other thing that we are doing at this point is relaunching the workforce planning process, which I think to your point is a more elaborate focus on what is the overarching workforce plan process. We are doing this in a soft launch right now. In fact, this afternoon, we are starting with CPAD. We'll be working this month, starting with the Assessor's Office and one of the divisions in Public Works, and we'll continue from there. We had started this process about a year ago, backed up, and took a look at needing to develop the data for the EEO plan that we could then incorporate into the workforce planning process. Our intent is that this will become an annual review. So the first process is to look at the workforce, what's needed, and as people think about how how they're going to hire, then take into consideration their their EEO goals.
Okay, I'll just say, so I appreciate that, and I also appreciate that HR does have a lot of programmatic supports coming forward. But just in my opinion, having a voluntary basis for putting together what is really essential work to support the city as a whole is doesn't cut it. So we need to figure out what are the right ways to request that information on a more consistent basis. And then I think the other kind of end to it is that, just like we do with the what do you call it, the the overall plans that the city coordinator's office helps departments put together for just their subject matter goals and things like that, there needs to be a support system for helping departments put together those plans, again, I think on the recruitment and hiring end, as well as on this retention end. I'll say I went to the Results Minneapolis Update Session that you recently hosted, which was excellent. But it was just clear from that that working on retention is very new to departments. They need support. They need assistance with, you know, what are the best practice strategies that they could incorporate or turn to meet the needs of their own employees and so forth. So anyway, I just want to put that out there, and I'll put some thought again into what might be a more structured city response in addition to what the mayor's doing.
Thank you. I will say with the EEO report and the action plans that were developed, they do address retention, they do address recruiting, and depends on what the particular department's needs are. And so there are a variety of strategies that were built directly for each department in order for them to have a path, if you will, to follow to better retain and recruit people. So that's part of the workforce plan and with the workforce, or excuse me, not workforce plan, but the EEO plan. And then the other aspect of that was the incorporation by the Finance Department of the human capital needs into the budget process based on which the EEO action plan for the department was. So those are two steps, again, around accountability, but I do appreciate the additional support and need to have a more structured response.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon?
Thank you very much, and I appreciate those those questions. I just wanted to note the fantastic work that I think has been going on in this area and how this is like night and day compared to five or 10 years ago and where we were focused and what we were doing. And I think you're all very professional, very calm in making the presentations, but you can tell there's an enormous amount of work that has gone into developing these various strategies and targeted focus points. And it's, well, it's a little discouraging that we didn't get 1.5% where we wanted. We were all, it also depends a lot on what the turnover is and what new jobs get created. And we are making progress, and I think that it's significant, and we're talking about things like implicit bias in hiring like we never have before. I'm particularly concerned and wondering about promotion and advancement and what role bias plays in that as well. Implicit bias, not just of those supervisors, but implicit bias of the individuals. I spent a large part of my professional life as an educator and a teacher, and I just remember we would hear studies and data that would talk about how differently teachers treated boys versus girls. Boys, you can handle that. You can take care of that. I know you can do it. Go get them tiger or whatever. And girls, how can I help you? What can I do for you? Could I, you know, I'll show you again or whatever. And then I look at the city and I look at the individuals that I know who are working at the city and who advances faster and more quickly up the ladder in the city, and I think there is a gender imbalance there. So I want us to look at that, and I just want to encourage us as we talk about bias in hiring, let's think about what bias might be going on in terms of advancement and pathways forward within the city and and helping individuals see that you might have a pathway for for success and what are you interested in? And you could can do it, but also help others see that in each other, if that makes any sense. And it sounds like we're doing some of that. I think those support groups are, that's not what we're actually calling them, but.
Employee resource groups?
Make a big difference, and that's really helpful too, but we need to get that communication back. I am curious, there was one slide about appointed. We kind of, we talked about some different categories of employees, department heads, appointed and managers. Could you tell us how many appointed people we're talking about, those appointed leaders? The department heads is a very small group, so changing that percentage is challenging. Appointed must be pretty.
The total numbers are on the tops of each of the bars. So for the department heads, you can see that in 2017, nine of the 22 department heads were female. For appointed staff, 54 of 110 were females, so about 50%.
And if we wanted to know, oh, sorry, managers, what would we, do we have a number for managers? That came up later, and probably a lot of those appointed are managers. But I appreciate you pointing that out. I'm sorry I missed the.
And we can certainly pull up the numbers for managers in general because not all managers are in an appointed category. So we can send you that information.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
And I would like to thank you for the recognition, but also to indicate that there are a number of strategies that we have in the works that I I think are either starting to have impact because they're new, and so the the training for hiring managers and the upcoming training for all people who sit on an interview panel will help with the bias that happens in hiring. When we talk about hiring and and recruitment, we're not only talking about new to the city, but also promotion. About 50% of our hires are are promotions within the city. So we're looking at that as well. And the thing that's coming up in the fall that we're very excited about is a job fair that will help for employees, an internal job fair that will talk about the kinds of work that we do in the city, the kinds of jobs that are available, also with support for application and resume writing and interviewing skills. So we're hoping that that will also help all of our employees present themselves in the the best possible light when competing for for internal positions.
And has there been an opportunity for council members to take implicit bias training? And if I missed it, will there be another opportunity?
Yes and yes. And we'll certainly let you know when the next one comes up.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation and all of your hard work. I note a couple of things that are missing in the report, and so I just want to note them because they seem to be pretty big successes. I know there's a pathways program for EMT training, and eight people have been hired already. We've been contacted by the good folks in the fire department and asked to promote that kind of training. And I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about why that wasn't listed in the circle of pathways programs? Because that seems to be a real opportunity. Also, I think the biggest success the city has had with regards to recruitment and diversity of women and people of color is in the Urban Scholars and Step Up Programs. And I'm wondering how many have we hired to permanent positions? They're both very, very successful programs that we've put a lot of money into. I'm wondering if we can't have a hiring policy that says step up interns or urban scholars get automatic interviews in the city for positions that they're interested in. I mean, we have one of them running for mayor. So obviously, these are very bright, intelligent, articulate young men and women, and exactly the kinds of people that we like to hire. How are we transferring that training into hiring in the city?
The EMS Academy, quite frankly, could have been, could have been on that circle. It is one of the newer ones that have launched. The examples that I chose were either ones that are coming up or some of the newer ones, but you're absolutely right. It also has been a very successful model modeled off of community service officer as well, very successful model, and have been able to use that EMS pathway and working with labor to whether we have an eligible list or not for firefighter, to be able to consider graduates of the EMS program for firefighter positions here and have been very successful in doing that. You're absolutely right. It's been a very successful program, and fire departments around the country are are looking at that.
Right, and the the department and its staff are unbelievably committed to it and committed to talking about it, to elected officials and communities and neighborhoods. I've never seen a program that well publicized. And so it seems like it's the model of all of the pathways programs because of the way the department and its staff have really embraced it.
And I believe, I believe through very successful programs like the CSO program, like the EMS, that gets other departments very excited, understanding and supporting a program like that. For many, many of the smaller departments, resources has really been their challenge. So we've been helping support them and figure out how they get the resources to be in the community to be able to do those types of pathways programs for their departments as well.
And then on the urban scholars issue, what do you think about the idea of giving preferential treatment to urban scholars and step up interns for city employment?
I don't, I think that is something absolutely that the Labor, Hiring and Promotion Labor Management Committee could absolutely tackle. I believe the, again, very strong partnership. We have four of the business reps from the large, the largest labor labor units on the on the committee with us. They're very committed to diversifying, helping us think through strategies and where they play a role in helping to diversify the city. I think that that is an absolute wonderful topic for them to discuss. I don't think they'll have a problem with doing that. In terms of urban scholars and and step up hires, I did an analysis about a year ago, and I want to, if memory serves, I believe about 10% of the total urban scholars had been hired at the city in a permanent position. You know, many of them, when they started out, they were either sophomores. And so they've now, they're continuing their schooling, so it will be, you know, a few years before before they graduate. I think probably in the next two years, we'll start. before they graduate. I think probably in the next two years, we'll start seeing more applying for city positions. But it's an interesting conversation, too, to have with the Civil Rights Department about having those individuals come back and apply for city jobs. I want to say, out of the, out of the total number, 160 that have gone through urban scholars, probably, I'm forgetting, I'm forgetting the number. It was somewhere around the 20% mark that had applied for a city position, and about 10% were hired. So again, it's also about the types of positions we have at that moment. And maybe we need to create a pool of positions for them to grow into. Many of them coming right out of school don't have the experience levels for some of the jobs that they're applying for. And so maybe we have been looking at recreating a program that we had here at the city. And in probably five, six or seven years ago, during the economic downturn, a lot of those positions went away, but it was just a cluster of trainee or apprentice types of positions that we could hire interns and young folks just graduating out of college into so that they can get the experience for cities positions. So we're also looking at revamping that.
Madam Chair, I just think if this is, this is one area where we've had tremendous success in this issue, with regard to this issue of women and people of color. And we know that every single one of these students that we interact with are just incredible and very passionate about the city. So I think we should go above and beyond. And if we can't go above and beyond, we should be also touting that experience to the county and the school district and the park board and other government jurisdictions. These are young people who really want to work for government and believe in it. And that's really the way that we'll diversify our workforce and all of the other government workforces is to put money into those kinds of programs and then translate that into actual employment.
Right. And I, pardon me for interrupting. One other program that we're looking at, just beginning to have some discussions with the state, they are also looking at the same type of thing. How do they utilize their interns the best so that they can attract them and keep them in state employment? Part of the challenge of the state has been they, they're, they're more part-time positions for their internships, and a lot of the interns are looking for full-time opportunities. And so being able to partner with the state, maybe they work part-time at the city and part-time at the state, so we can get a full-time employment and keep them in public sector employment.
Thanks. I, you know, I actually wonder, and there's another council member still in queue, but if we might almost even kind of translate Councilmember Goodman's question into a direction to staff to more formally work to evaluate this idea. I will say, I think that it's been brought up before, and I actually kind of inside my head thought it was already getting evaluated. So if it's not, then, you know, that'd be a good thing to do and come back with a recommendation to us on either, you know, how would you do that? Is it for urban scholars or more broadly for our intern-type programs at the city? And, and come back with some recommendations. So, and we can work on what would be a report-back date on that. But I think to kind of just, knowing there has been work on this area already, as Councilmember Goodman said, we have invested quite a lot in a very unique program that has had a lot of success in attracting people to government as a potential profession. And it'd be good to get some feedback on whether her suggestion could, could be, could be realized. All right. Councilmember Quincy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, early in the presentation, you talked a little bit about, obviously, the missing the goals by a half percent, something like that. And then you talked a little bit more about the exit interview kind of process. And as this conversation is continuing, it's all about retention and identifying people and using recruitment strategies. Just wonder if you could talk about that exit process a little bit more. Is it, is it as robust as it could be? Is it used as a retention model for future employment as we fill that position? And I wonder if you could talk about that a little bit, because I'm thinking of a couple of situations in the departments I work more closely with where we lost people. And we didn't lose them for their, you know, lack of interest in the city or their, you know, their experience or what they've done. We actually cultivated a better employee to be recruited and poached away by other cities. And so I'm just wondering, is that something we should be doing, just developing our own talent as well as retaining them? And what does that take? Or can we, can we say that this is part of what we're trying to do, is make sure that our employees, the residents of Minneapolis, are working in other capacities for better opportunities? So it's, it's an interesting situation, because HR's filled, their job is to fill the qualified candidate within the city enterprise. And sometimes we kind of go off and think, well, what we're really trying to do is to make sure people of Minneapolis have full employment and work in other places, and that's our job. So I'm just, there's kind of a difference between filling our jobs and filling the, the goals of the, of the city in employment.
I completely agree. So our current, our current exit interview process is face-to-face or via survey. So when someone is leaving the organization, the HR generalist assigned to that department does reach out to the employees to have a face-to-face meeting and do, you know, an exit interview, if you will. Do you know the percentage? It's, it's a fairly small percentage of people who actually take advantage of that. For those who leave employment not wanting to have a face-to-face meeting with the HR generalist, we do also send out a survey. We get about a 20% response rate to the survey. We are, we will be moving to hiring an outside consultant to do phone interviews. And also, we'll probably still have the exit survey available online. But they have, for certain employers, they have reached upwards of a 50% completion rate of an exit survey, when they're able to talk to someone that they know is anonymous, doesn't work for the city, can really be very honest in their responses. And that will be launching as soon as the, the plan for the leave administration is finished. And yes, so currently, we do, I mean, we do, we do talk with people. It is, that information is not put in a system currently where the data is mineable across the organization to look for themes or patterns. It's really more anecdotal, department by department. But absolutely, yes, the HR generalists, where they identify that there are issues in a particular department as people are exiting, they're absolutely having those conversations with their, with the management. Or if they're seeing that it's a compensation issue or a classification issue, they absolutely are addressing that as well within the Human Resources Department. But I also absolutely agree, we need to take a very multi-pronged approach when it comes to retention. It is not a one-size-fits-all answer either to a very complex issue. As Mary Lynn alluded to during the presentation, we are also working with the Hiring and Promotion Labor Management Committee. And it will come as no surprise that this is a burning issue for them, the promotion and retention of a current staff. And we are working on a number of different strategies. We call, we're looking at it in the framework of the job classification strategy. But exactly to your point that we're losing people to other organizations, is that because of compensation? Is that because there isn't enough growth and development? Is that because they want to be, for instance, the best beat cop on the planet? And they can, they can be a good beat cop in Bloomington and make more money? We need to look at a pay structure that compensates people for being best in class, if you will, which we currently don't have. And the, and the Hiring and Promotion Labor Management Committee, that is exactly what we're focusing on. Different frameworks to keep a different job classification system that allows flexibility for either compensation or promotion or advancement. And then we're also taking a look at internal development broadly throughout the organization. Employees, by and large, employees also don't know how to, how their transferable skills can take them from one area of the city to a different area of the city. So you have some small departments that are pretty flat, and there really isn't much growth and development in terms of advancement within their own department. And so being able to take, take a look at those transferable skills and have, we're creating a, a job lattice within the city. So in addition to, what's on my job ladder if I want to stay in the same career? How can I use my transferable skills and go to other areas of the city? And we retain them at the city for their valuable institutional knowledge that they have.
Thank you. It's just really important to realize that, that separation with an employee and employer can give you two opportunities. One, to change the job or the recruitment strategy or the retention strategy. But it's also a management training tool on the other end. How can we make sure we don't lose that person for another time? So it's just complicated. You guys are the professionals. I just want to thank you for acknowledging that and incorporating it as part of our work. Thank you.
Just wanted to double check if there was anybody else in queue. I don't see anybody else. I was going to make one last comment here, which is, one of the things I kind of hear out in the world and sometimes from our own employees a little bit is just a desire that we are telling more of our story in a way that it translates to those outside the HR depart, you know, that kind of gets out there a little bit more. So I hear that in different venues. And I think that's a reflection of, you know, there is interest in what we have done, the fact that we are struggling through this work, just like other cities, but we are taking concrete steps and we're trying to accelerate some of the things that we're doing, in part because we are going to have some of the workforce challenges that, again, are felt all over the state. So I just wanted to encourage you and the department to think about what else could be done. It seems like in your recommendations, even with the website work around the visibility and those things, that's kind of a piece of it. Some of it might even be, you know, how are you kind of pitching, you know, the stories, whether it's the EMS story or, or other things, to those who really would like to hear that, you know, the Cities Matter magazine from the League of Minnesota Cities or whatever that is. So I would just say to encourage you to continue to think of, how do we tell our story? Because that's also, I think, how we get some continued feedback and critique and partnership opportunities from others knowing of our, of our work. And, and I want to say thank you for being willing to come back and share with us what's happening. It's a, it's a, it's an area of work that's very important to the city. So thank you for kind of keeping the nose to the grindstone and continuing to work on how do we support our workforce and build the workforce for our future. We have a receive and file action, and we also had a staff direction that was made. And I think I might, I think we get the general direction, the staff direction, which was for the department to go back and develop some recommendations around reviewing how there may be some preference or, or pathway for urban scholars and maybe more broadly interns to become future city employees. And I can work on refining that language, maybe even after this meeting, before the council meeting. So I will go ahead and move both the staff direction and receive and file of this item. Discussion, seen and all in approval, say aye. Aye opposed. That item is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support.
So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Andrew Johnson for the Information Technology Subcommittee.
Thank you, Chair Glennon. Welcome, committee members, subcommittee members. Today, we have with us Otto Dahl, our CIO, to discuss the Open Data Compliance Report and provide us a presentation and our annual update on that. I also wanted to mention that the Gartner Study on IT Governance, we will have a presentation on that in the next cycle or two. We wanted to get a little more work on that presentation, also give committee members a chance to absorb this presentation as well. So thank you for joining us today, Mr. Dahl.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson and committee members. Let me just bring this up. All right. What I'd like to do is briefly go through, really, an overview of the report that was also issued on the Open Data Compliance over the past years. If you recall, the, the city put in place an open data policy back in the summer of 2014. The Open Data Portal itself went live in December of 2014. And since then, the city has added a number of data sets. The first two columns and the very top of the third column here are the traditional sorts of data that one would usually refer to when they're looking for open data, the remainder being things like police incident data, et cetera. The remainder of the third column represents, if you will, spatial layers. These are things like outlines of the city boundaries, the ward boundaries, where fire stations are, the outlines of water features in the city, streams, lakes, et cetera. So there's a lot of, that type of information is very useful for people who are generating maps, so they can be accurate in being able to overlay a view, whether they're looking at information relative to a police precinct versus a ward versus a community versus a neighborhood, et cetera. And so you, you see a lot of that information that obviously the city has had. We make that available to the general public along with the traditional data. You'll also notice from here that, in particular, I'll point out, City Assessor in the last two years has really gotten a lot of their information out there. So we see this sort of fits and starts about that times there's a burst of information that comes from a given department or set of departments versus a slower progression in others. Now, in particular, open data doesn't just exist within the Open Data Portal proper, but rather, there are other vehicles. One that a number of folks on the outside make use of is the Financial Transparency Platform that the Finance and Property Services Department has put out there. And if you were to go inside of that application, you could actually download the data, just like you can the data that's stored out on the Open Data Portal. Another dynamic to keep in mind, for years, you've had the ability, the public has had the ability to get property information. If you know the address, you can put that into an application that was in the City Assessor's world, and it would push back information on that property. With the recent data sets that have been put, placed on the Open Data Portal, now that information in bulk, if you will, it has been placed out and available so that one doesn't have to do it, if you will, one at a time. The final dynamic is, there are some other mechanisms. One is called MAP@Minneapolis. And then you probably have heard the word Tableau, which is a product that we make use of, which is really a data visualization product. And what this allows is, the departments can have an interactive visualization of information for the public. And so, for instance, on the bottom there, I've got an example, bottom left, of CPED's Planning Application Site, which gets over 6,500 views. To the right is Civil Rights Police Conduct Review. And you're able to actually go in and filter information. You're able to, if you will, manipulate information and in some cases actually download the information as well, so that you can further manipulate it as you see fit from the public standpoint. And so this, again, is an orientation where data is put in some context that allows people to investigate it relative to the context. The example I traditionally use is, it's one thing for us to put out a spreadsheet or some data set that shows all the dangerous dogs in the city. It's yet another, if I can go someplace and I go on a map and I can look at a location and see, are there any dangerous dogs in that part of the city? And what are the characteristics of those particular? Or exactly where are those dogs living? And so, again, putting data in context, most definitely, is what a lot of people seek. And also, we see that through usage of these multiple ways of getting information to the public. In particular, the data portal usage, what we have found is, there's a lot of people that are going out there looking. We believe they're looking to see what's out there at any given moment. And so, we've seen over 3,800 actual page views. But what we're seeing is a sizable increase in the number of actual data sets that are downloaded. We had just over 2,400 in 2016. We've already exceeded that number through the first We've already exceeded that number through the first six months of 2017. One should keep in mind, though, that the majority of the data that's being downloaded are these boundaries and this information that's used in mapmaking and visualization of data through maps, as you'll see here in a moment. We've also tried to keep an eye on, if you will, the internet to see if there are applications that come up or smartphone applications. It's very hard for us to spot that, because typically, something that would get created wouldn't necessarily indicate that they're using city data. But we do talk to the various civic technologists and their organizations in the Twin Cities area, and we really haven't spotted or heard of any to date. The top 10 downloaded data sets besides police incidents and rental licenses, again, all of that is sort of this geospatial boundary-type information for mapmaking. People want to know where the bicycle, for instance, and pedestrian trails are. They can go out and get those coordinates and throw it on a map. When we look at the progress, feel it's fairly slow towards ultimately meeting the Open Data Policy, which is all-appropriate information being put out in the public space. Most definitely, we do get many requests from the public for information that goes through our data practices process for getting that information to them. We do see departments striving for data that's more often asked for, to get that out on the portal, so they can just point those requesters to the portal, and the requesters can, in essence, do self-service of achieving or acquiring, I should say, that data. The public, though, most definitely, they're looking, I don't really think people are going out and grabbing that spreadsheet or those data sets as much as trying to find some mechanism where they can interact with the data in some context that's meaningful to them. We hear from civic technologists, researchers, the press, people are always looking for other data. And of course, that will get satisfied as the city puts more and more of its current data resources out on the site or potentially put in a mechanism that puts that data in I think one of the reasons we don't see a lot of smartphones, at least smartphone apps in particular, even web apps and others, is they need data that changes probably fairly often, if you will, more, something that, if it changes often, it's something that then has to be used more often. And a lot of times, we see folks looking for marketable information, if you will, because it's being viewed as a business venture versus necessarily something for the community's just general good. With any application, smartphone or otherwise, once you put something out there, people expect it to be there, probably for, maybe not forever, but for a very long period of time. And it takes a lot of effort and so forth to maintain things over time. And so, again, we often see people looking for something that they, in ultimate, can turn into a marketable type of application. And then finally, I've talked with a number of jurisdictions, cities and counties in particular, as well as states, my colleagues, and the sorts of things that we see with open data is pretty consistent across the country, in the sense that I'm not sensing that we're too far off from others in the way of, for instance, the usage of our information. Some jurisdictions split up their data into small data sets, and so you start seeing the touting of, we have thousands of data sets out there. One approach we, the approach we have taken here in the city is, you want police incident data, and yes, we have multiple data sets, but it's a data set per year. And so we don't turn around and say, okay, we're going to take a certain type of crime and just make a data set of it and put it out there. So all that data is out there, it's just done in a more aggregated form. And that concludes my comments, and I stand ready to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Dahl. I have a question myself on the utilization of, well, sorry, actually, the amount of data being put out by different departments. Are there any departments that, in particular, have been lagging in this field or don't have any data out?
There are two, as far as the Open Data Portal. One is City Attorney's Office, the other is Civil Rights. In the case of Civil Rights, they've got an interactive data display, as you saw, for their police conduct review information is out there. And so you, but as far as the portal itself, Civil Rights has not put any bulk data out through the portal mechanism to date.
Do either of those two departments participate in the Open Data Work Group?
That I don't know. I'd have to go check the attendance list for those.
Certainly. Thank you. Hopefully, we can have all departments participating by the time we have a report next year. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Dahl? Additional questions on this? Well, appreciate your time and the report of this. I know utilization continues to grow. I just wanted to point that out to colleagues, that already we have more access on this portal this year than all of last year combined. So that's pretty impressive growth at this point, and hopefully, that trend continues and we continue to get more data out there that's usable for folks. So we do have, I'll go ahead and move to receive and file this report, seeing no further comments. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. I also do have before us a staff direction, working with staff and the coordinators' office on this. I appreciate the help with this. We have a direction for the Open Data Work Group to develop recommendations for operational goals for the Open Data Policy, including increasing usability, usefulness, and utilization of open data and the Open Data Portal. Feedback from the local civic technology community should be gathered and used in developing these recommendations. Recommendations are to be presented before the IT Subcommittee within 90 days. Is there any discussion on the staff direction? All right. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Dahl. Thanks to the subcommittee members, and I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Chair Glennon.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Johnson, and thank you for the report, Mr. Dahl. We have reports of committees remaining, and I'll turn to our first, Committee Development and Regulatory Services, with Councilmember Goodman. Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are seven items on our agenda for approval on Friday. Items one and two are land sales. Item three is our land sales under the Long-Term Affordability Program. Item number four are the liquor business and gambling licenses. Five are contract amendments for our Great Streets Program. Six has to do with the rental license reinstatement. One of these properties was a Mahmoud Khan property. And item seven are license conditions for Clubhouse Jaeger. With that, I'm happy to answer questions about any of the items. All right. Thank you. I'm not seeing questions. Next, we have Transportation and Public Works with its chair, Councilmember Wright.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We'll be forwarding seven items for full consideration. All items are standard actions of the committee, no highlights.
All right. Thank you. Ways and Means with Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Ways and Means will bring 17 items forward for consideration on Friday. There are four legal settlements and two contract amendments. We also have an agreement with Hennepin County for the use of electronic poll books and also the July Gift and Donation Acceptance Report. We also have the additional funding source for the Collaborative Safety Strategies Program included in this cycle's report. We have a membership agreement with Northside Economic Opportunity Network, several other traditional kind of contracts and contract extensions. And then, let's see, we also have the agreement with three artists related to the public art at Bidee Mondesky. So that's a terrific project in coordination with the park board. And finally, a separation agreement of employment for Craig Taylor. So we're happy to discuss any of those 17 items, but look forward to consideration on Friday.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Zoning and Planning with its vice chair, Councilmember Andrew Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We are bringing forward 12 items on Friday, a number of different conditional use permit interim, use permits, rezonings. The two noteworthy items are two appeals that are being denied that were filed on behalf of Sheridan Neighborhood Organization for two projects on Marshall Street Northeast and 14th and 13th avenues, as well as a conditional use permit review appeal for Holiday Stations. I know the council member for that ward was working with Holiday, working with staff and other interested parties to bring forward some conditions related to that. The committee did forward it without recommendation, expecting that that would be the case, that they'd work together. I understand that they've reached agreement for all parties, and I'm sure that we'll be hearing more about that on Friday, and that if you have any questions in the meantime, I wouldn't hesitate to reach out to the council member.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I believe we have concluded with our business for today, and we are adjourned.